A few strings, and I will tell you, having met Bob Baker years ago, this man has left a true legacy behind.
You guys ready for a puppet show?
Yeah!
Today at the Madrid Theater, put on by Bahama Cultural Affairs, we're doing two shows. Bob Baker was a puppeteer. Back when Bob Baker was six years old, this is all the way back in 1930, he saw his first puppet show, and then spent the rest of his life creating the Bob Baker Marinette Theater. Puppets have been around since ancient Egypt, if not before. The magic that existed 50 years ago, 2,000 years ago, still exists today.
I've been to other puppet shows, but never like this.
My favorite part of the show were the ostriches.
I just really appreciate that we were able to come today and that this is provided by the city. It's a really nice service to the community.
We do shows all year long and all throughout Los Angeles. We're a traveling company, it comes out just like this, and we're popping up everywhere. All that information's at bobbakermarinettetheater.com. Puppets are for children of all ages, so from two to toothless. Bob used to say, "Be happy, be healthy, and always keep a smile on your face."
Becoming a firefighter is a rigorous process of skill and strength training. Not just anyone can become one. Now imagine how awesome a dog you would have to be to pass all that grueling training. Reporter Saido Pagan has the opportunity to meet one of these very special canines.
Good girl, good girl, easy, easy.
This is Veia and her owner and handler, LA firefighter Margaret Stewart. On this day, they are training for their important and critical job. Veia is one of only two dogs at the Los Angeles Fire Department certified to recover human remains. Veia is deployed about 12 times a year. She's there after a fire, a disaster, and at crime scenes.
She locates human blood, bone, or tissue, which could mean a body that fell victim in a structure fire, it could be in a disaster with a mud flow, it could be any type of scenario.
Veia is well-suited for her job on the human remains detection team. She is widely known for her intelligence, high energy, and hard work.
It doesn't matter what's around her, she's just gonna plow through, up, over, around, to get to what she needs to do to get her toy.
Canine Veia's skills are in demand all over Southern California. Firefighters say her ability to find remains helps to bring closure to grieving families.
In 2016, she's responsible for locating four individuals. It was a family that perished in a structure fire, and no one knew they were there.
Veia's recovery work has earned her accolades from the Los Angeles Fire Department. A few years ago, she and two other dogs became the first non-humans to receive a valor award from the LAFD.
She's established a reputation that she, we work hard, we're reliable, and we train regularly to maintain that. Show me, show me, search!
Firefighter Stewart credits the love and the bond that exists between them for making it all work.
We go everywhere together, she comes to work with me, she's at the station, we go on vacation together, we travel to workshops across the country together. So, we're a package deal.
How adorable is she? Oh my gosh, I would love to take her home. Veia is one of several specially-trained dogs used by the LA Fire Department. And next week, we'll meet one of her coworkers, a canine who is part of the arson counterterrorism section. The Golden Dragon Parade turns 121, wow! Local chefs compete to make savory dishes with chocolate, and Wisdom Immersive Art Park opens a new exhibit featuring Samskara. All this and more in Things to Do.
The Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles presents the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade. With thousands lining the parade route each year, this colorful celebration along North Broadway in Chinatown has become the premier cultural event in the Southern California Asian-American community. Don't miss the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade, happening Saturday, February 1st, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit lagoldendragonparade.com. Chocolate is the name of the game at the Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club. This event is not about creating sweet cupcakes. This cooking contest boasts food of the gods kind of bites. It's refined but translatable to the chocolate lover who wants to experience chocolate in a new way. Get a front-row seat to creative deliciousness. The Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club drops Friday, January 31st. For details, visit their listing on Gold Star. If you love art, music, VR, and exploring new things, come experience the magic of Samskara, an immersive art and technology exhibition. This multimedia exhibit is a great sanctuary for getting out of your head and realizing the universe around you. Take your friends and get lost together in one or all four interactive domes. Prepare to see tons of captivating visuals and Instagram-worthy pictures at Samskara, happening February 2nd from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. For details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition, I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can also catch us online at lacityview.org. And we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, so no excuses to miss us. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, January 31st, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Herastos, and Weisar, Coetz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Oferl, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, and Aquorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Sadio moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Madam President, there has been a request to continue Item 1 to Friday, February 28th.
Okay, without objection.
Items 2 through 15 are items for which public hearing have been held. A corrected committee report has been posted and circulated for Item 9.
Members, are there any specials on these items? Mr. Lee?
I'd like to call Item Number 11 special, please.
Item 11 for Mr. Lee. Any others, members?
So you'll take out 11.
Okay, seeing none?
Which we're gonna do right now.
Go ahead and vote on the rest of the items, let's open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Okay, what's next?
Item 16 is an item notice for a public hearing.
Okay, just go ahead and leave that on the desk, what's next? Or, Mr. Bonin?
Yes, I'd like to continue this item for two weeks.
Do you want to continue Item 16 for two weeks?
16 for two weeks, yeah.
Madam Clerk, can you give us that date, please?
Yes, that will be continued to Friday, February 14th.
Okay, without objection. That will be the order, what's next?
Council... Madam President, that takes council back to Presentations, or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Coetz, are you ready, sir, for your presentation? Good morning, Mr. Coetz.
Good morning, Madam President. We're here today to honor the retirement of a longtime member of the city family, Dove LaSalle. I'm especially partial to Dove for several reasons. First of all, he's a fellow UCLA Bruin. Maybe that's why Paul Krikorian isn't here at this moment, he doesn't want to hear me say that. In fact, he's more of one than I am, because he got two degrees there while I only got one, but I don't hold that against him. Second, Dove and I share the Jewish faith, and Dove is a devout practitioner who never let the pressures of work and raising a family clash with observing the Sabbath and the Jewish holidays, and I greatly admire that. Third, Dove and I also share a love of animals which has spilled over into our respective careers. As the attorney for the Department of Animal Services for more than a decade and a half, Dove has often attended the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee, and the meetings that I chair, and provided his legal wisdom on issues we're grappling with. He's drafted the groundbreaking Animal Welfare Ordinances on spay and neuter, elephant bull hooks, pet chops, and fur sales, and many other issues that this council has generated. He's probably the only member of the City Attorney's Team who ever knew about elephants, because he cares about elephants and not because he's had to defend a lawsuit about them. And I have on good authority that, over the many years he's been the attorney for the LA Zoo, he always makes sure to take a few minutes after zoo commission meetings to go out and see a few of his clients, the zoo animals, before heading back to his office. I guess Dove's probably glad I didn't say that in public until now, but I take it as proof that the man cared enough about his clients to visit with them in person. Dove's also an avid world traveler who has fueled his curiosity and fed his sense of wonder with trips to a long list of destinations, both exotic and tourist-friendly. We should all use at least some of our vacations as well as he has. So after some 45 years, he's ready to graduate to Lasers and spend more time with his lovely wife, Helene, and his three children, Ben, Julia, and Rachel. And Dove LaSalle has had a long and worthy career in the City Attorney's Office, and probably learned and affected more about how the city works than most people will ever know. But don't take it just from me. Here to tell you more about Dove and his role in the City Attorney's Office is City Attorney Mike Fior.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Coetz, Madam President, members of the City Council. You know, it's a very unusual thing to have a retirement like this. Dove is here with his family, but look who's behind his immediate family. Members of the City Attorney family, many of them. And I'm gonna turn to them for a second. They are here because Dove LaSalle, who has served the city longer than some members of this City Council have been alive, they're here because of the affection they have for Dove. And I would like them to lead all of us in giving Dove LaSalle an extremely well-deserved standing ovation. Would you please? As Paul said, 45 years of service, but more than that, his family is one of Dove's most, I think, the treasure of his life. And I'm so pleased that Helene, and Ben, and Julie, and Rachel can be here to see their dad celebrated this way. Because a celebration it is. I was on the City Council, and Dove had already been in the city for 21 years. At that point, he was managing City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney, focused on housing and redevelopment. A role he served for 13 years in our office. Dove began his career as a prosecutor, but he has worked in so many different aspects of City Attorney world, and in each one, Dove has served with distinction. But I do want to say, Paul listed many of Dove's accomplishments, and I could list other roles that Dove has had with the city, but there is a reason why so many members of our staff chose to be here right now with Dove and your family. And the reason isn't merely because of your legal acumen, it's not just because of your analytical skills or your achievements as a litigator or lawyer. They're here because they have such affection for you as a person. Dove LaSalle is one of the sweetest, most humane members of any office that I can imagine. Dove LaSalle is a colleague who inspires respect and deep friendship from others with whom he works. Your integrity, your intellect, all those are essential to who you are, Dove. But you are the quintessential mensch. Right? And I know in our office, there have been lots of hugs, lots of expressions of gratitude for how you've been an exemplary teammate. But it is just vital to me that the city of Los Angeles recognize someone who is the model of what it means to be a lawyer in the public's service, doing so every day with the gentle humanity that characterizes the essence of Dove LaSalle. So Dove, on behalf of an extremely grateful city, a warm and loving City Attorney's Office, I want to say to you, it has been a privilege in my career to have the chance to work with you both here as a member of the council, and then to work with you in the City Attorney's Office. It's an honor to know your family, and all of us here owe you a deep debt of gratitude. Congratulations on a job well done. Dove LaSalle. So Dove says it's gonna make him cry, and you know what? That's okay. After 45 years of service, you can do whatever the heck you want to, Dove. All right, Mr. Coetz, you have the certificate, I believe, for Dove.
Mr. Coetz, I have a member on the queue, do you want to... Go ahead, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and say a few words, because actually, I'm one of those members that City Attorney Mike Fior is talking about, where your career in public service to the city of Los Angeles is longer than I've ever lived in this world. But I'm a little bit in shock. I mean, I saw you, I didn't expect anything, because you're always here. I didn't see you on the agenda for your retirement, and it is a tremendous loss for the city of LA. But your 45 years of service, and I think Mike said it best, of your public service of 45 years is unparalleled. We've had the fortunate opportunity to work together on many of the issues. Everybody in my staff is very fond of you. I mean, especially the exotic animals ban, which was the precursor for the party house ordinance and all of these things. You literally were able to craft that together and make it even better than what we ever expected it to be. So I just want to acknowledge your service to the city of LA and to all of the Angelinos in Los Angeles, and thank you so very much. But don't go too far. I heard retirement, always, people get bored and they always want to come back and do all sorts of other public service in the community. So we'll always be around, and it's great to call you a friend. Thank you, Dove.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Dove, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words, but I'll give you the opportunity.
Sure.
I will be brief. First, I want to thank both Paul, and Michael, and David. But I want to thank the city as well. Not only the work that I've been privileged to do, but even more than that, the people that I've been privileged to work with. Having Mike as a boss has been terrific. But working with Rich Llewellyn, with Sharon So, with so many staff members, both electeds, and working for elected offices, working for various departments, and especially for my colleagues in the City Attorney's Office, has really been a privilege for me. has really been a privilege for me. One more thing that I want to say, because many of you don't know, the funny thing is that I probably wouldn't have been retiring this year, probably would have made it 46 years, except for the fact that several months ago, I was diagnosed with ALS. It's a very debilitating disease. It's been known, it's been around for years, it's been known for years. If you all remember, it used to be called Lou Gehrig's Disease. If I may ask a favor of you all, because one of the things that I shockingly discovered was that for this, there is no treatment, there's no course of action. All the doctors can do is a bunch of tests to eliminate other causes for this debilitation, and at the end of the day, when they decide that what you really have is ALS, that's pretty much where medicine stops. And I would ask you to ask the legislature and Congress to appropriate more money for this disease. I didn't know very many people, I knew virtually nobody who had ALS, but in talking to people, what I've discovered is that so many people know people who have ALS. There's not enough money to do any research on this, there are very few clinical trials. This is a horrible debilitating disease, and yet, there is no medicine for it, there's nothing to reverse it, there's nothing to slow it down, there is nothing to make it better. All the doctors can do is watch you get weaker and more debilitated. Please, if one thing that I can leave with you, aside from the fact that I really loved working for the city and never thought, never in a million years, that I would be here for 45 years, is, to the degree you have contacts to try to raise the awareness of ALS and to get more funding to do research for it, that would be greatly appreciated, and that for me would be a wonderful legacy. Thank you.
Madam President, if I might, I did not know that Dove was going to reveal that diagnosis here. If I had known that, I would, in my own remarks, have added one adjective that I purposely omitted because I wanted to preserve Dove and his family's privacy, and that's courage. Dove is, as you can tell, an exceptionally courageous guy. It took courage to stand here right now. Dove abruptly announced he had to stop working, but that courage, Dove, Dove, that you have displayed today and every day, is the thing that I hope your family remembers the most in the days to come, because all of us are going to need at some point in our lives to summon that courage in the wake of some event. Dove, you've shown us how to live. Thank you.
And I have known other people who have had ALS as well, and I can promise you, we will have those conversations with our friends in the state legislature and Congress and see what we can do to make that your legacy.
Let's take a photograph, shall we? Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know, the order is all screwed up. Hold it, wait one second. Let me get on one second.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's give Dove another round of applause. Thank you, sir. You have some special guests in council chambers?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to take this moment to actually welcome Wonderland Elementary. Guys, want to stand up? We have... Yes, you're on TV. Tell your parents, Channel 35. We have two fifth-grade classes from Wonderland Elementary, and that's Ms. Breyer's and Mr. Diamond's class. The future leaders of America, future elected officials, future council members, they're here for City Hall for the first time, and they're going to go on a tour for their civic education. Thank you, guys, for attending.
Thank you, boys and girls, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Chambers. Hope you enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you for being here. Mr. Sadi, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Don't push her. Will you mention that she's here when you come up? Madam President, if I may, can we begin with a video?
Absolutely. Cue the video for Mr. Sadi.
Everything good that has happened to me has happened as a direct result of help from someone else, everything. The message is, you know, for me, take drugs and alcohol out of your life, and education is the key to anything you want to do. Well, anybody can deliver that message, the only problem is they're not listening unless you got their attention.
I want to tell you that this night's special to me because very few guests do I actually get a little nervous. And I get a little nervous of Danny because he could hurt me. But ladies and gentlemen, Danny Trejo.
When this guy come up and said, hey, do you want to be in this movie? Can you act like a conman? I thought, let me see, I've been in San Quentin, Folsom, Solidad, Chinoza. I'll give it a shot. I started training Eric Roberts out of box for the movie Runaway Train, and the director, Andre Kozelowski, saw that and said, you'd be in movie. And that's, you know, that was how I got started in the movie. I had a lot of good role models, but I chose to follow someone that wasn't. Growing up, you could either be a laborer, work in a body shop, sand cars, or a criminal. 1968, in Solidad Prison, some serious stuff went down. You come to a point to where it just comes to, I'm going to die, you know, I am worth absolutely nothing. I came out of prison in 1969, made a deal with God, you know, and just, you know, I will say your name every day, and I will do whatever I can for my fellow man. That's the way I live.
Your art, there's a message behind it, there's a social activism that I love about you. Your love for reaching, you know, at-risk youth, you relate.
This is the face of the Latino community, you know, right here. We go to college, we do good things in the community. Sky's the limit, it's up to you. You know, personally, I'd rather shoot for the moon and miss than aim for the gutter and make it.
Madam President and colleagues, it's a great pleasure for me to bring Danny Trejo here with us today. It demonstrates what a commitment to sobriety does and brings to your life, 50 years of sobriety. As you know, Danny started, as this film indicated, with Runaway Train, and then worked with several movies in the 80s and 90s. My favorite, as he knows, was Heat, where he worked with the giants of the industry, Robert De Niro, Al Pacino. What an incredible movie that Heat was. It was unfortunately emulated by other crime in the San Gabriel Valley. He has then later began to work with Robert Rodriguez, and Robert Rodriguez is one of Hollywood's most iconic directors. He did Desperado, From Dust Till Dawn, as we know, Spy Kids, and then his role that began with Spy Kids, Machete. He's one of the best-known actors in Hollywood, he has a face that you won't forget. He is someone who has taken his brand down and become an entrepreneur. He believes in healthy living, healthy lifestyles, it's reflective of his restaurant. I must confess that on Sunday afternoons, when I go to the movie theaters, I stop by his restaurant, I won't say where, but I stop by his restaurant on the way to the movie theaters. Before I hand him over to be introduced by Gloria Inahosa, let me say that most recently, Herb Wesson and I were with Danny, opening up a church here on the right south of downtown. We were happy to spend time with him. I enjoyed riding our double-decker bus with him on the Mexican Independence Parade, and Danny and I were able to spend a lot of time together, and I got to know him. He is at all the events that are important where Latinos need a celebrity, a public face. I know my work with Padres Contra del Concerto, with much of the philanthropy that I work on, Danny is always available and always present. He's there so often that sometimes you're surprised if he's not there. He works as hard as all of us do out in the community, he always makes his celebrity available. He is a man of generosity, and as he indicated, has that firm belief that generosity is really your greatest gift, and he practices that on a daily basis. I'm very proud to have him here with us today. I thank him for his mentorship and his friendship. Danny, thank you, because he has handled his celebrity with tremendous integrity and with generosity. And so with that, let me ask Gloria to come up here and make the other introductions.
Hello, I'm Gloria Inahosa. I've had the pleasure of representing Mr. Trejo for 26 years. I know you think, wow, he must have been 20 when we started. But what Danny has taught me over the years is loyalty and friendship, and how to give back to your fellow man. Today, when I was on the freeways trying to get here from Redondo Beach, and I got cut off several times, Danny's voice would come in, be good to your fellow man. And whether it be with the homeless, with his friends, with people in need, he makes sure that I make sure that with our vets and our community, that they have access to him. And that's a treasure that not everyone can give. So with that, I want to introduce quickly, because they can speak much better than I, Brendan Bunker and Jennifer Steele. Jennifer, former wife of Eddie Bunker, who was instrumental in getting Danny into Runaway Train and was Danny's best friend, and Brendan is Danny's godson. Mr. Bunker was a crime novelist and very well-known in our city. I'm going to have them to say a few words.
Well, I kind of just found out about this yesterday. Can you talk for a couple minutes and sum up Danny Trejo, which is not an easy task? I first met him in 1975, when I was 24 years old. I was a counselor in a prison halfway house. I had other women friends that were also drug treatment counselors, and he was a drug treatment counselor in another program nearby, and I would hear about him, you know, how charming he was, how much he helped inner-city kids. And then I met him again in 1985, when my husband and Brendan's father was the screenwriter on Runaway Train with John Voight and Eric Roberts. And my husband called me excitedly to tell me that Danny had been hired to work on the set and that he would be getting his SAG card, no easy feat. So I see on here Danny Trejo Day for Los Angeles. Wow. I think his legacy is, to me, is not the 400 or 500 films that he's been in, but just about what everybody's spoke about. The most important thing about him is his humanity. He's just an extraordinary human being. I'll tell you one quick story and close with that. When he was rescuing that child from being pinned underneath a car, so funny seeing him on the news because that's just standard stuff with Danny rescuing people, you can picture the scene, the terrified mother on the side, the autistic child that's pinned underneath the car, it's a panic situation, and Danny comes up and gets immediately to help, gets under the car and tells the kid, we got to use our superpowers. So to me, Danny Trejo's superpower is the way that he helps our fellow man.
I'd like to also introduce Ash Shaw, Mr. Trejo's business partner in Trejo's Tacos and the Trejo Empire.
Thank you for having me here today. I'll be brief. Six years ago, when I was about to turn 50 years old, I wanted a career change. I'd been in the movie business for 30 years, that's where I'd met Danny, and one day we're on the set and we're talking about food, and I'm like, hey, why don't we open a restaurant? I'm about to turn 50, and I'm like, you know what, if I don't do this now, I'll never do it. And now I look back, and I'm like, he was almost 70, and he said, yes. Today, we have almost 10 restaurants, we'll have four more by the end of this year. Everyone knows he's such a great humanitarian, but the one thing that... The one thing that he's done is he's brought 400 jobs directly to the city. Indirectly, probably over 1,000. And in five years, hopefully, that'll be 10,000. He's a great guy. He inspires me every day. He's the most gentle, loving, kind family man. I'm so glad that the city's recognizing him today. Thank you.
And we'll wrap it up with Gilbert Trejo, Mr. Trejo's son.
Hello. Thank you guys so much for this proclamation from my father. This came as a big shock to all of us, even though at this point it shouldn't. We, we've experienced my father helping, helping people. For every one of us has experienced it for most of our lives at this point. For me, it's been my entire life. Long before he started acting, he was active in the community. And I always saw my dad as a celebrity long before anybody else. Because whenever we were on the street, everyone came. Thank you so much. You helped my son get sober. Thank you so much for the life you've given me from his days as a drug counselor. And to be honored by the city of Los Angeles like this is, is amazing for somebody who spent so many days in their youth just across the street. And nights in jail. And the only proclamation that he'd had as a young man was that he was a complete menace and should not be released on his own recognizance. So this, this just comes as such an honor. And we want to thank you guys so much.
Colleagues, with that, let me introduce the man, the myth, the legend, the one, the incomparable, Danny Trejo. Machete.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Just thank you, Los Angeles. I, I love this city. Yeah, I absolutely adore this city and I did. I, I used to, I remember when City Hall was the tallest building in Los Angeles. And me and Eddie Bunker, we used to walk from Second and Los Angeles to Ninth and Figueroa, to the pantry. And that's where we would have like breakfast. And we'd do that about three times a week. And we watched, we watched everything. We watched everything built from the, from hole in the ground. And I did, I used to look at City Hall from across the street all the time, you know. Hey. Never thought, you know. But by the grace of God, and I love, in 1968 in Solidad, I promised, I promised our Lord, let me die with dignity. I will say your name every day. And I will, I will do whatever I can for my fellow man. And that's sort of, that's from where I was to where I am is giving. That's all. Just giving. Give to the city. Give to anybody in it and just give my time. I, I, I started sponsoring this little girl who's a fighter, a boxer. And they needed a sponsor. I go, sure. So sponsored her and then went down to Mexico. She won the WBC Flyweight Champ of the World. And she got our logo on her shorts. And so it was like, yeah. And then, and then on the Canelo undercard, she won the WBA Flyweight Champion of the World. And her name is Sanis Estraven. It's like, I am so proud of, of just being a part of. I'm part of being in Los Angeles. She's Los Angeles. We're Los Angeles. And that's what's so beautiful about this, this whole thing. This, this city, it's like alive and it is. I used to ride street cars here. And, and we would, we wouldn't pay. Because you, you jump on the street car from the back and then he would drive it. And then he, when he stopped, he'd get off. And you'd jump off because he was gonna, and then when he got back on, you'd just get back on. And we would ride them all over the city. That was our fun and it was okay. And this city is still beautiful. Everything about it. So I just, I love being a part of Los Angeles. I love being a part of the help. God bless you. Thank you so much for this award.
Mr. Sidio, I have a few members on the queue.
Oh, yes. Please.
Mr. Lee, followed by Mr. Bonin.
We're gonna hear from our colleagues.
Mr. Trejo, a few years ago, we invited you to be a part of the Council District 12, Making Movies That Matter Film Festival, Youth Film Festival. And I remember when we asked you, you didn't have any special requests. All you said was if there are kids involved and it works with their schedule, that you would be there. And I want to thank you because your positive message not only resonated with the elementary school kids, but all the way through to the college kids that were in attendance that day. I just want to thank you and just tell you that this is a well-deserved recognition.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. Gil, thank you for doing this today. Danny, good to see you two days in a row. Colleagues, I am proud to represent the newest Trejo's Tacos, which opened in West LA and had their grand opening yesterday. So I am glad today to have some swag with me. I've got my Trejo's Tacos t-shirt. My hot sauce. My new coffee mug. Trejo's Tacos Coffee. We're really glad to have you in West LA. And, you know, we've all been to a lot of ribbon cuttings. I don't know if anybody among us has been to a ribbon cutting where the ribbon was actually cut with a machete, which is the way Danny did it yesterday. But I also wanted to rise on a personal note to say thank you. Because a lot of people have spoken about the, the influence you have had and the impact you've had on the lives of countless people who have gotten clean and sober over the years. And I can testify to that. When I, back in 95 or 96, when I was newly sober, I heard Danny speak at a meeting. Back then, he had about as much sobriety as I've got today. And I remember being touched and inspired by your words. And I've seen you speak a few other times since then. And I have, I have heard so many people talk about the, the power of your bearing witness and how important you have been as, as a mentor and as a guide and as an example. So I just wanted to say, really on behalf of everyone who's been touched by your voice or inspired by your example, thank you for walking ahead of us and blazing the trail and clearing the brush on the road that we trudge to happy destiny. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Gil, for bringing in Danny for this well-deserved recognition. You know, Danny, you mentioned that Los Angeles is a really remarkable and beautiful place. And it's made so because of the generosity of people just like yourself. And the fact that you took your gifts and you continue to share it with everyone. You know, it's like clockwork. We can always count on you at the Pacoima Christmas Parade. You know, we, we know that we can always count on you when we need you, especially to help uplift and inspire our youth. And to remind everybody that the opportunity for change and transformation is limitless. There is no time limit to when we can approach the challenges that we might be faced with in our life and find ourselves at a crossroads and make a different choice and make a different decision. And you represent that. And you always sharing that story with such compassion and generosity is really what makes a tremendous difference. You know, the city has this wonderful opportunity and we are on this horseshoe to honor people like yourself and with this kind of declaration that is uniquely these types of events. And so there is no one more deserving of this. I'm grateful that you're just, I know you're a stone's throw away from my house, at one of my favorite residents in the 7th District. But thank you for always just making yourself available and giving of yourself. It means a lot to everyone and, you know, whether, you know, whether it's through the endless employment opportunities and the commitment to exposing more people to green eating, right? And what that entails, especially for our community. I think you are, really have been a transformative, you've made a transformative impact for members of our community. And we're immensely proud of you for that. So thank you for always showing us the very best of yourself and giving back as often as you do. We really appreciate you. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I think we have a guest. Do you want to introduce?
Yeah, we have a special guest who's joined us. You want to introduce him, Mr. Sidio?
Oh, sure. So, you know, with Danny, he's such a leader that he can get people to get up really early, to catch really early flights and to make a trek across the country. It's a great honor and privilege to introduce someone who's, was very involved in the beginning of my political life. Someone who's doing a brilliant job representing us in Washington during these most turbulent times. A steady hand with great pleasure. Former council member, former Assembly member, current Congressman representing the valley, Tony Cardenas. Welcome.
Mr. Congressman.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gil, for once again reminding the spirit of Los Angeles that we all have a past, a present, but more importantly, a beautiful, awesome future. Danny, congratulations once again. Ladies and gentlemen, I had the honor of presenting Danny Trejo to the Speaker of the House of Representatives and Members of Congress and the Hispanic Caucus in the United States Capitol. And the words that Danny shared with us were very moving. But it also reminds us that we all deserve the dignity and the respect of opportunity. And that's what makes this country so awesome. That it doesn't matter if you were a knucklehead kid and you did a few dumb little things. You can grow up to be and use your heart to make the world a better place. And that's what you exude, Danny Trejo. You are a man of heart and commitment for the community and an amazing example for all of us. So thank you so much for doing what you do. Congratulations.
Back to you, Mr. Sidio.
Well, with that, Danny, in honoring you, we honor the city. In sharing your story, we share the hope and optimism for a brighter future for the city. Thank you. And this is your day.
Si, perdón, este presidente. Y si, es un gran honor estar aquí con todos ustedes. Estoy aquí para dar un honor a Danny Trejo. Danny Trejo es una de las estrellas muy popular en nuestra ciudad. Bueno, es un honor estar aquí con él. Quiero presentar. Quiero decir pocos palabras en español. Danny?
Gracias. Gracias a todos y Dios te bendiga a todos. Y overwhelmed, soy muy apreciado de todo. Muchísimas gracias.
That's our, por la prensa, por la prensa española. Somos chicanos y es el español de nosotros. We're Mexican-Americans and so obviously our Spanish is not. As our parents were not permitted to speak Spanish in a more darker period of time, they wanted to save their children from having those difficulties. And therefore, many of us Mexican-Americans of the Chicano era are not as articulate as others who have come later. So with that, we thank each and every one of you. Adelante.
Let's give Danny Trejo another round of applause, members. Thank you, Danny. Mr. Lee, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
I am.
We're gonna ask the members of our public if we can just lower our voices so that Mr. Lee can do his presentation. We gotta continue with our business this morning.
Members, on your desk you'll see two gifts that we brought you today. One, a hat and that is from the San Fernando Valley State College. And the second, a pin from the California State University, Northridge. I am so honored here to have the 1970 San Fernando Valley State College baseball team that won the NCAA National Championship in Springfield, Missouri. Can we have a round of applause for the champs? This was the first team to win a national championship for then San Fernando Valley State College. And in a few, few years after that, would be renamed later as California State University, Northridge. Now, I went to elementary school in an elementary school that was actually surrounded by Cal State Northridge. And I used to ride my bike home at the age of seven. And on my way home, I'd always have to pass the baseball fields. And I was so proud to see the national championship on, displayed on my way home. Because it was the same year that I was born. And I thought, wow, that's pretty cool. They won the national championship the year I was born. And I used to hold so much pride in that. And, you know, because growing up as a young child in Northridge, the college students at Cal State Northridge are what we looked up to. And to be standing here today and honoring that same team. And in a few, next month, to be able to put a, a permanent street sign outside the baseball field that acknowledges that national championship. Because I hear, I hear 50 years ago, this city failed to properly acknowledge their national championship. And we're here to remedy that today. This team was the underdog back then. I believe the number one ranked team was Chapman University, if I'm correct. And you guys defeated them in the regionals. And today, 50 years later, we are not only here to remember and celebrate this monumental achievement of the champs, as they are affectionately known to everyone in Northridge, but to celebrate a special bond that was formed back then that is even stronger today. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to spend some time with the champs at the reunion dinner. And it was extremely gratifying to see how old friends got together to reunite, share old stories. I learned a lot of individual nicknames about the different team players that I won't share here. But most importantly, like, not only the pride that they brought to our community, but I was, I was surprised to see that so many of the members of the team were people. I had no idea they were members of the team, but they were, I know them from being active community members in Council District 12. I affectionately have Ms. Northridge, Ms. Porter Ranch, and Ms. Granada Hills back there somewhere. And I didn't even know that they knew each other, let alone that they were married to three of the members of this very- married to three of the members of this very special team. You know, these men were more than teammates. They endured challenges and hardships both on and off the field. They were college students during a time when the country was experiencing significant racial unrest and turmoil. In fact, it was not uncommon for several of the teammates to be called racial slurs when they were out at games, but throughout it all, they always had each other's back. They were then, and still today, our brothers. Today, I am honored to recognize the champs, not only for their victory in 1970, but also for the lessons they teach me about the importance of friendship and service to your community. This team has maintained their ties with one another and with Cal State Northridge and the baseball program long after they graduated. At this time, I'd like everyone to turn your attention to the screens for a video presentation that Channel 35 prepared about this very special team. Well, this is the 50-year anniversary of the 1970 San Fernando Valley State College National Championship baseball team.
You could just tell by the amount of former players 50 years later that are here.
Twenty-five guys, 21 are still around to tell the story.
Relationships we've had for 50 years. Winning a championship instigates that, but you don't have this kind of relationship with these people unless there's a certain kind of chemistry.
My husband was a pitcher. He passed away in 2016. And 14 to 16 of his teammates came home in their jerseys, in their baseball, Valley State baseball caps and white gloves, and carried him to his final resting place. So, this is a really special group of people for me and my family.
If you ask anybody to define what a team means, this is the ultimate team experience.
There were very few real stars on the team, but we had unbelievable esprit de corps.
And that's kind of like brotherhood. They've stayed better friends off the field than they were on the field.
It's something very special, very special to us. It's not special to anybody else, but it's very special to us.
These are kids that grew up in communities that weren't rich, single-family homes after World War II, and they got a scholarship, which consisted of your books being paid for and your tuition being paid for, and that was it. And they were elated to have that opportunity.
The majority of these guys were first-generation college students, so this was their first experience in college. Their parents did not go.
We all stood for one thing, and it's still there for us. Once you become a champion, you're always a champion.
If you are close to obtaining what we've obtained, strive for it as hard as you can because you will never forget that feeling. You'll never forget that feeling of being a champion or being successful.
You may spend three or four years together as a teammate, but you're a family member for a lifetime.
So, today I'm joined by members of the CSU administration and also not only the players, but if I could ask their very special coach, Coach Hegurt, to say a few words. Coach?
Madam President and council persons, it's indeed an honor to be here. I'm a baseball coach, and hitting third is normally a really good thing. But following the first two presentations today is a little tough. Those were outstanding achievements and outstanding presentations. 1956, Cal State LA, Los Angeles State College in those days, started extension classes out in the San Fernando Valley. 1958, the San Fernando Valley became a freestanding institution of San Fernando Valley State College. The CSU decided to put a school out there that would serve the needs of the Caneo, Simi, Santa Clarita, Ventura, Palmdale area, Lancaster area, and southern Bakersfield area for students going to school. So, that started in 1958, or '59 was the first freshman class admitted. Why is this important today? Basically, the San Fernando Valley was the bedroom for Los Angeles. That's where cheaper homes were, that's where people were living, and everyone was working this way. So, San Fernando Valley had an area, but not really any accomplishments or anything that happened that made it significant. 1970 was when these guys started their classes, the fall of 1959. Let me describe the campus at that time. We were still in temporary bungalows for the original classes that were taught. There were major construction going on, there were major buildings completed. It was also the highlight, or the lowlight basically, of the Vietnam student unrest demonstrations. There was SDS involvement on our campus, there was police occupation, there was National Guard occupation. And through it all, students were trying to go to school, these baseball players were trying to practice, and life was going on. But it was not a typical, normal life for a student at that point. Let me tell you a little about these students. We have 22 different high schools represented in this group. We have a student from Bakersfield, we have a student from Antelope Valley, so we were spread pretty much throughout the whole Los Angeles area, which is kind of an important thing at that time. 1970, we started practice the fall. And at that time, we had done a pretty good job of recruiting, and we had a very, very competitive team. And I say this for a couple of reasons. These people at the beginning did not like each other. There was a very competitive situation. And as the fall went on and practices finished for the fall, players learned to respect each other a great deal, they learned their roles on the team, and they became what we considered to be a very good team at that point. We were sure they were going to be competitive, but we weren't sure exactly how competitive they were going to be. Regular season, we finished 33 and 19, school record, and that was accomplishment. Finished 18 and 6 in the league, school record and that accomplishment. And we were invited to the NCAA playoffs, which were held in Sacramento, featured the number-one team in the nation, Chapman College, UC Irvine, Sacramento State, and San Fernando Valley State College. That's the good news. Bad news is, the athletic director called me in before we were ready to go and said, "Congratulations, you've had a great year, but I'm going to try to get money for your trip tomorrow." The school was having some financial difficulties, as typical for most CSU programs. And at that time, we offed to Sacramento, we went in private cars, competed, won that regional with three wins and one loss, came home, had the same story again, "Congratulations, you are going to the World Series," which is in Springfield, Missouri. Athletic Director and I had the same talk, and he said, "I have funding for four days. It's a six-day tournament." So, we had some challenges as we're getting ready to go. Who's involved in that tournament? Southwest Missouri State was the host, Springfield College was from Maine was in there, and Nickel State from Louisiana, and San Fernando Valley State College. 16 of the top teams in the country played the weekend before in the regional, and the top four teams in the country were there. At the World Series, we lost the first game, beat Springfield College the next day, beat Southwest Missouri the next day, and the last day of the tournament, we had to win a doubleheader against Nickel State, and we did 9 to 5. And the second ballgame, we won 2 to 1 in probably one of the best baseball games I've ever coached and been involved with. And the starting pitcher is here tonight, here today, Brian Ford, went the complete distance, having pitched the first game of the tournament also. So, major accomplishment. We came home to a little bit of notoriety, finally, for the San Fernando Valley. The LA Times and the Daily News had gone back and had feature stories. There was television coverage. It was kind of a big deal. Mayor Yordi invited us down here at that time and presented us with a plaque from the city of Los Angeles. LA Dodgers had us on the field and welcomed us and introduced us. LA Angels did the same thing following weekend. So, the reason I'm bringing this up, this is an accomplishment from the team, and what these guys did at that point, I think from that point on, is equally important. Eight of them went on to play professional baseball for a limited time. We had two fellows that went on, and many attorneys, they're back here behind me someplace, making sure that I don't get myself in trouble today. We had a PhD out of that class, out of that team. We had two police officers, retired LA police officers. We had two attorneys. We have a CFO and a founding person of a Fortune 500 company. We had a number of educators that went on to be not only just teachers and coaches, but went on to be superintendents and principals of various high schools and junior colleges throughout the San Fernando Valley and the Los Angeles area. We had a number of small business owners that were very, very successful. And what's important about this is, I don't know what your definition of a team is. I think you all can give us some fundamental pieces of a team. These guys started out as a good team and became a great team. And a great team by the fact that it wasn't just made up of what they accomplished, but it was what their teammates were and still continue to be today, brothers, good friends, and staying behind each other all the way through. It's really my honor, and I'm humbled to do that, to be here today representing these guys, because this was a unique group of people that fought through a lot of adversity and did what they had to do, both on and off the field for the university and for the San Fernando Valley and for the Los Angeles basin itself. But without the efforts of Becky Lebec, who's been talked about already, and Grace Yao, who's helped us get here physically to the building, and Councilman Lee, we would not be here today, and we're honored to be here and very happy to be here. It's my pleasure now to introduce the captain of this team to briefly tell you a few things about the team.
Thank you. What makes today so special is not just because it happened 50 years ago. It happened 50 years ago, and this group of 25 players, four coaches, and its sports information director have kept in constant contact with each other over that span of time. Formal 10-year reunions and an annual benefit golf tournament has helped solidify our friendships and competitive camaraderie for this very special group of men. Just last weekend, as was mentioned, Cal State University Northridge honored us on our championship, our five decades of togetherness, and also our continued support of the program's baseball program. So, we had our dinner. After the dinner, nice gifts, and also commemorative baseball caps were handed out to the players to help identify the celebration. So, we as players would like to thank the City Council, and we presented each of the council members with that very same commemorative national championship 50-year reunion cap. The V obviously stands for Valley State, or more correctly, San Fernando Valley State College. And so, from now on, anytime each of you see or wear this cap, hopefully you'll remember that morning that you celebrated an old team of athletes and made those athletes and the coaching staff and the university feel extremely proud and appreciated. It means a lot to this close-knit group to once again have a reason to collectively relive something in our lives that was probably one of the most... One of the best experiences in our lives. I'm just sorry that four of our teammates who are no longer with us, Hondo, Levacu, Circus Boy, and Ram Man are not here to help or be involved with this celebration. They would be extremely proud as well as we are. And so, with that, on behalf of the 1970... I know it's a long time ago, 1970 Matador baseball team, sincerely thank you.
So, Coach, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to recognize the 50th anniversary of the state champs.
Give these folks another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, madam, could we move on to item 11? It was called special by Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, do you want to... You called item 11 special?
Thank you, Madam President. I called item 11 special because I'd just like to provide some brief background to my fellow colleagues about this motion that we are taking action before us today. This is about the Hidden Creeks property that is located in the unincorporated part of Porter Ranch, but is still within the city's sphere of influence. For many years, developers has thought to develop this land and for residential development, which would forever change the sort of landscape of the hillsides behind us. And I'm proud to say that the city of Los Angeles today, with your eye vote, is officially joining with the county to ensure that this 200-acre property is preserved for future generations to enjoy. When I took office last fall, one of the first things I did was reach out to Supervisor Barker to figure out a way that we could fund and purchase this property. And I am pleased to say that we have been able to do this along with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority to preserve and acquire this parcel and maintain it as open space forever. I want to thank Supervisor Barker for her partnership, who truly deserves most of the credit for this, and to the committee members who supported this motion. This property will provide wildlife, valuable habitat, and recreational opportunities for Angelenos in the San Fernando Valley and beyond. Colleagues, I ask for an eye vote to support keeping this open space forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, we're going to move on to general public comment. Yes, Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I apologize. Item 15, I had intended to call special, but it went past before I got a chance to do that. I'd like to ask that we reconsider that matter for purposes of requesting a continuance of that matter for two weeks.
Very well. Let's go ahead and take up item 15 for reconsideration. Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. Mr. Kukorian, that item is now before us.
13 ayes.
And I'd like to ask that it be continued.
Okay. Without objection, that will be the order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to general public comment. If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Giof Reyes, are you here? Giof?
For the record, Madam President, that item will be continued two weeks to February 14.
Correct. Thank you. Our next speaker, Eric Previn, general public comment. Andrea Lopez? Ciprin Ethan? Mr. Eric Previn, you want to come on up?
Want me to go first?
You have a one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, and I appreciate Kukorian continuing the Studio City recender project for which they're approving an extra eight and a half million to be tied to some Prop 68 money that we're hoping to get. I don't think that Prop 68 should be used as a weapon against open space in Studio City, so I hope that this continuance turns into a reframing of what is a ginormous inappropriate project on one of the last bits of open space in our district. I also note that Mr. Faubel is present today and that we will be appearing Monday ex parte over at the courthouse to ring the bell on... Hopefully, the judge will recover nicely from his situation, but we do need a fair trial. And I know that Mr. Faubel is a member of the municipal corporation, as were the other attorneys assembled on that day. And we look forward to a fair and reasonable hearing. I hope that the judge is able to rest easily and take care of whatever is necessary prior to the hearing, which will Monday at 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. You please state your name.
Andrea Lopez.
Okay, welcome. You have one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
My name is Andrea Lopez, and I'm the founding community engagement coordinator for Para los Niños, and I'm here to support the Fair Work Week ordinance because workers deserve fair schedules that provide social and economic security. At Para los Niños, we're currently serving over 6,000 children, youth, and families a year. And what we're seeing is how scheduling instability is greatly impacting our families' ability not only to secure quality education, but also to participate in parent engagement opportunities for their children's schooling. Workers with schedule instability also may not have the steady income that allows them to provide the essentialness... to provide the essential necessities for their home, which, these are all contributions to a stressful home environment, which impacts the ability for parents to participate in programs that support their children's learning. That is why, on behalf of Para los Niños, the children, youth, and families that we serve, I would like to thank you all for your continued support on the Fair Work Week ordinance.
Thank you. Next speaker. What is your name?
Good morning, my name is Ciprian Ameth, and I'm a member of the National Council of Jewish Women in Los Angeles. Our organization is a partner in the Fair Work Week campaign. At this time of the year, Jews are retelling the story of the Israelites' exodus from Egypt, a people's journey from bondage to freedom. The work we do at NCJW is based on our faith values, and one of our basic principles that all of us are created equal and deserve dignity and respect. We believe that so long as retail workers are not free to make a doctor's appointment, meet with their child's teacher, care for a sick relative, then they are not truly free. Unless their time is valued, and not dictated by the whim of their manager, or worse, an algorithm, then our community is still locked in the slave mindset of history. So I want to thank you all for your continued support in making this issue a priority. And in 2020, let us make retail workers free to choose how they want to use their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, can you give me just a second while I call additional speakers to the podium? Eli Longnecker? Eli? Rachel Reyes? Wayne Spindler? Okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, my name is Ciprian O'Beasler, I'm an organizer with the Restaurant Opportunities Center of Los Angeles. We fight to improve the working conditions and wages for restaurant workers in the city of Los Angeles, and we're also members of the Fair Work Week Coalition. We are here in support of the Fair Work Week ordinance. We want to lift up the urgency and the impact that unstable work schedules have on workers in the city is deep, affecting children, parents, and the health of communities. By passing the ordinance now, it would allow workers the stability many of us already enjoy, letting them breathe a little bit easier. We thank you especially, our sponsors, for your support, and let's get this passed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Eli Longnecker, I'm the coordinator for the LA Worker Center Network. We are a member of the Fair Work Week Coalition. The network is made up of immigrant workers and workers of color in low-wage industries in Los Angeles. Passing the Fair Work Week policy represents a commitment to working families on behalf of the city, and recognition that everyone's time is important regardless of their job. As we all know, LA has a homelessness crisis. Unpredictable schedules exacerbate homelessness, because how can you make rent if you don't know how much money you're going to make? We know that the policy is closely aligned with Council President Martinez's priority to uplift working families. It's time to give Angelenos a Fair Work Week. Thank you for your support.
Okay, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Rachel Reyes. I'm here on my day off to urge you all to continue your support for a Fair Work Week. I've been a retail worker for six years, manager for four years across three different retail brands. During this past holiday season, I was routinely asked to change my schedule to meet the needs of my business, meaning I was clocking 60 hours a week with one day off for two months. Workers like myself have no protection when we're asked to make these changes, but this body can fix that. My management style is collaborative, because proper scheduling is necessary to achieve a democratic workplace. I know it is possible to schedule my team fairly months in advance, because I have done it before. The benefits of fair scheduling are evident. Business is better when we feel respected, employees can tend to personal and professional pursuits, and mental health is improved when we know how much money we'll be making. If we want to empower retail workers in Los Angeles, we must start in our businesses with better management. To be frank, I'm exhausted. Workers need rest, and we deserve peace of mind. We must push forward for a Fair Work Week now. Thank you.
So yes, nobody should vote for Herb Wesson. No on Herb Wesson, yes on Holly Mitchell for the Board of Supervisors. And no on John Lee. John Lee failed to graduate from CSUN. He is a failure. Nury Martinez graduated from CSUN. Nury Martinez is 10 times more intelligent on the record than John Lee. John Lee is too corrupt, John Lee is too stupid to serve on this city council, and no on John Lee. Now, no on Paul Kukorian, and I say, no. And then, of course, we have banners and signs which will be distributed in our campaign. No on Mark Ridley Thomas, yes on Grace Yu for City Council, CD10. And finally, no on Jackie Lacy, yes on Gascon for DA. Jackie Lacy is a fucking cunt. Thank you.
Rachel Reyes, please come forward. Rachel Reyes, followed by Dr. Mello Desrey, Desire, please come forward. Oh, thank you. Dr. Desire, how about Mike Greenspan? Is Mike here? I didn't see him. Please come forward. And last speaker, Antonio Ramirez. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. So we're talking about fair wages, primarily, how do we support African-American women who want to run their own business? Does that include the Fair Act as well? I am very disturbed right now. Harris Dawson is not here, but I live in CD8, and I just got told by Denise Jackson, the office manager, that CD8 is not interested in housing projects through the Kingdom Warriors Foundation, even though we're on the ground floor. And Solomon Rivera, who is the chief of staff, literally told me that he's not going to work with us. So with that being said, he ran unimposed, and I hope he doesn't this time, because it's too comfortable. The CD office is like, it's like a college frat room when I enter in those doors upstairs on the fourth floor. I'm very disturbed right now, so I'll be back with some finishing comments.
Mike Greenspan, come forward. Where's Antonio? Is Antonio here? Please come forward, make your way. Thank you.
Mike Greenspan? Anyone but Wesson? Yes. We are getting ready to open up Target. We are on target to open up a very controversial Target in the city of Los Angeles on Sunset, at 5500 Sunset. Yeah, the neighborhood people want a court battle, so the Target people in the city went shopping for a judge, and they found one. I guess, sent a few bottles of liquor to the judge, and the judge ruled in favor of the city of Los Angeles and the Target Corporation. But the main thing, last summer, Herb Wesson, our preacher pushing liquor, pushed a liquor license through the Target. Mr. B-O-O-Z-E, the guy who's in the liquor business with Michael Bay out of Torrance. Yeah, isn't it great? Shouldn't we have more liquor? Shouldn't we put Herb Wesson in a supervisor job so we'll have more liquor? Hey, it's a great day to be alive and well in Los Angeles, Monica and Nury would have aborted me. Vote, vote, vote!
Thank you. Vote the corrupted, self-serving criminal leeches, then the satanic communist socialist Democrats out, who want to put America as a footstool to China, Russia, Israel, Iran, Cuba, and India, among many others. It is time to reelect our handsome, beautiful, beloved, brilliant, savvy, the honorable President Donald and Melania Trump. They are in the White House by divine intervention, ain't nobody going to boot them out. His bogus case must be acquitted now. Send the divisive, psycho nut, evil, wicked, illuminati, elite, satanic Zionist Jew matzah ball asshole, Adam Schiff and Nadler, to prison for perjury and crimes against humanity, for helping put all our Vietnam vets on the streets where most of them died. Fuck you, Adam Schiff and Nancy Pelosi, Nadler, Chuck Schumer, and all the motherfucking Democrats, including that fucking house nigger Jackie Lacy, who's too busy filing false charges and falsely arresting like me, instead of going after the motherfucking gangbangers and the fucking niggers who pee, attack, and rob and beat homeless women. Fuck you!
Your time's up. Your time's up. Arnold Sacks? I see a lot of heads shaking in the audience. This is general public comment, First Amendment right, trust me, we don't like it either.
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sacks, and I know what "trust me" means. You know, it's really fascinating, a couple of weeks ago, we've heard some discussion about the homeless situation, I guess. The county authorized $500 million in cash to purchase a hospital. $500 million in cash from the county, yet they can't put anybody into temporary types of housing. So what is going on with the county? Where is Herb, by the way? He wants to run for Mark Ridley Thomas's office. It would really be a good time to get his impressions on that. And Jan Perry, who brought forth the idea of eliminating fast-food outlets in south-central LA, where is she on this item? I mean, it seems like you get people bitching, African-Americans bitching, but their African-American leaders are making people suffer in their communities. It's who you elect, that's what's important.
Very good. That concludes general public comment. Antonio, stop disrupting this meeting. Okay, with that, what's before us, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is cleared.
Thank you, ma'am. Members, any announcements on this glorious Friday morning? Okay. Seeing none, let us all rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rue, for adjourning motions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Noble Williams, and I am joined by generations of his family who are all here today. And Noble was a Caribbean-American from the islands of Trinidad and Tobago. He grew up with three siblings and was known for his loving and infectious personality. His family instilled in him a love of music. His father, John Buddy Williams, was an accomplished bass player and bandleader, bass player, bass, sorry. Yeah, I'm sure he loved to fish as well. But a bass player and bandleader. Noble and his three siblings all followed in their father's footsteps, and Noble's love for music was one of his most defining traits. Noble was a fixture in the Los Angeles community, a loving family man who took great pride in spending time with his wife, his children, and grandchildren. Noble earned an MBA from Cal State University, Los Angeles, and had a very lucrative career in business, accounting, and real estate for over 40 years. But Noble is more remembered for his uplifting and positive outlook on life. No matter what was happening around him, whether good times or bad, he was always the first to look on the brighter side. In fact, one of his well-known remarks, whenever anyone asked him how he was doing, he would always say, "I am wonderful." When asked about the secret of his positivity, he explained, "Why be good and fine when it costs you nothing to be wonderful?" It was for one of those reasons, one of these reasons, that Noble got his nickname of Mr. Wonderful. Noble was the bedrock of his community, beloved by his family and neighbors alike, and we remember today of his vibrant spirit. In true Noble fashion, and in his memory, let's all resolve today to be wonderful. And today, I am joined by Noble's loving family and his friends, his daughters Candy, who is a leader, a strong leader in the Sherman Oaks neighborhood, also his daughter Nicole Williams, his son Sheldon Williams, and his grandchildren Spencer, Shalom, Sheldon, Derek, and Landon. May he rest in peace, and if we could adjourn today's meeting in his memory.
It's a great tribute, thank you, and to his family and friends, thanks for joining us, may he rest in peace.
Thank you so much.
Any others, members? Okay, seeing none, we are now adjourned, let us go forth and serve the people of Los Angeles. Have a safe and blessed weekend.